Call the meeting to order. I want to thank you for coming. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Education. It is Wednesday, February 18th, 2015. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Stuber?
Here.
Mrs. Kane-Criswell?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mrs. Trow Aldrin?
Here.
Now if I could ask everyone to please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before I give my President's Report tonight, I do just want to make one note of administrative nature. Later in our agenda, we do have a period of public participation that's referred to as remonstrance. And per our board policy, remonstrance allows those who wish to address the board to speak for up to five minutes, and remonstrance is held to a 30-minute time period because this is a business meeting. I've received more than the usual six blue cards for remonstrance tonight, so I've asked the folks out in the lobby that have an interest in speaking tonight to just organize themselves for the topic that they wish to address, so that we limit it to six people, which will take us to the 30-minute maximum. So they obviously have a right to speak at remonstrance and public participation, but we do hold it to 30 minutes, and I asked them to figure out which six will speak. So if you have an interest in speaking tonight and you've filled out a blue card, there's a gentleman back in the back who's kind of organizing which six, and I just wanted to make that announcement. So thanks again to everybody who's here. It's mid-February, and we are certainly in the grip of old man winter. We haven't seen green grass in a couple of months, and the frigid temperatures are making it hard to start school buses, as well as our own cars in our driveways in the morning. Needless to say, there's many of us, I think the superintendent primarily, who await warmer temperatures of springtime and can't wait for it to get here. There are a few topics that I want to highlight tonight on our agenda. First is, under our administrative reports, we will hear from Ms. Villa from Wilcox, who will provide an update regarding the newly revised and much more comprehensive kindergarten registration process. And after that, we will receive an update regarding a special group of teachers known as academic coaches, and we're going to hear about the success that they've been having with our students. Other points of interest tonight are regarding the Common Core standards and the associated standardized testing which has begun, and also a few notes to remind the public that our state legislators are currently debating the recently released state biennial budget. This week, our students began taking the state mandated standardized test known as Park Assessment. The initiation of this activity has resulted in some renewed discussion regarding the Common Core standards and standardized testing. The Common Core state standards were adopted by the Ohio State Board of Education back in 2010 and established the expectations of what students should know and be able to do when completing each grade K through 12 in mathematics and in English Language Arts. The three primary administrative school associations that represent education in Columbus, the OSBA, BASSA, and OASBO, have supported the Common Core standards, and they provided some of the following comments. "The new standards focus on developing students' critical thinking and problem-solving and writing skills, real-world skills that students need to be successful in today's workforce." In addition, the Ohio new standards focus on a deeper understanding of the materials and not just basic memorization and test-taking skills. It's important to note that the curriculum is still decided at the local level. The three administrative organizations have stated that the best understanding of what works in the classroom comes from the teachers, and that's why these standards will establish what the students need to know, but will not dictate how the teachers should teach. Instead, the schools and the teachers will decide how best to help the students reach the standards. Standardized testing in our schools has been around for many years. Our experienced educators, such as Mrs. Powers, our building principals, and classroom teachers will tell you that they've seen several changes over the years. And the latest change to move towards the Common Core standards and the associated standardized testing called PARK is another example of that evolution and progression towards a goal of helping the students be college and career-ready. Another interesting point to consider is that Common Core standards address only math and English Language Arts, not the science and social studies subjects. The latter two are not part of the Common Core standards, but rather are Ohio-based standards that were designed by the Ohio Department of Education. An issue of specific interest for all school districts has been the issue of the amount of time that students and teachers are spending on the exams and in preparation. As we have reported during the past year, this district is in favor of modifications to the standardized testing process that would reduce the time spent on testing and allow teachers more time in the classroom for teaching. The legislators have been debating this issue in Columbus since last year, and this is a topic that has had Mrs. Powers' attention as she has traveled to Columbus to advocate for these revisions to the testing process and reduction in the time spent so that we can apply more time for teaching in the classroom. So as I stated, our superintendent has been actively engaged with the legislators in Columbus regarding this topic, and will continue to work alongside other superintendents from across the state to ensure that testing that is required makes sense and provides value to our teaching staff and students. On a bright note, Mrs. Powers has kept the board very informed each day this week since the testing has begun, and the reports have been positive. Our students are tackling these new computer-based exams very well. Also to note is that the testing is being conducted in our newly constructed computer labs. Last year, the board approved construction in our buildings to renovate unused space in some of our buildings that is now carpeted and contains soundproof panels and is fully outfitted with the appropriate technology to support this computer-based testing. Mrs. Powers will provide additional details regarding that during her report. Another statewide topic to watch is the recently released draft of the state biennial budget, which is known as House Bill 64. Unfortunately, this topic is related in the state's budget to the most concerning issue for our district, which is now back on the table, and that's the reduction of the tangible personal property reimbursement funds. A memo that we received states that the executive budget proposes to continue the phase-out of these transitional TPP payments. A significant source of revenue to school districts had been the tangible personal property tax, or TPP, and back in 2006, this TPP tax revenue was worth approximately $9.8 million to this school district, almost 25 percent of our budget. However, in 2006, House Bill 66 took effect, which eliminates the TPP tax and replaces it with a state-controlled tax known as the commercial activity tax, or CAT tax. And although the state has provided some reimbursement for the lost TPP tax, the intention of this legislation has been the eventual elimination of all tax revenue that was originally derived from the TPP tax. Ultimately, what the state has done is replace the TPP tax with a CAT tax, and through this process, they have redirected local funds away from school districts and into the state's general fund. House Bill 66 was enacted in 2006, and since then, Twinsburg has seen a decrease of approximately $3 million in the reimbursement of that lost TPP revenue. The operational change plan that was implemented during 2012, 2013 neutralized the effect of that loss, and those actions stabilized the reduction of our cash reserve. While it's too early at this point to clearly determine the financial impact that this newly released state budget will have for our district, we will continue to monitor this discussion in Columbus and voice our concerns to the appropriate legislators. So there's certainly much to observe at the state level that may have a direct impact locally, and we will continue to report on these issues at upcoming board meetings. This evening, we are once again reminded of why we are here, and we recognize students for their achievements. Tonight, we have much to celebrate. Our students continue to succeed, and we will continue to highlight their accomplishments throughout the year. Therefore, it is appropriate that we turn our attention now to what matters most, and that are students. And thus, a special welcome to the staff, students, and families from Wilcox Elementary, Dodge Intermediate, and the Twinsburg High School. I know that you're here tonight for some very special recognitions, and without further delay, I would like to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Powers for the superintendent's report, which will then be followed by these student recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Stuber. Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening, families. I know you've already heard from me tonight. Tomorrow is going to be a calamity day. It is so frigid outside, and the forecast is calling for even more cold tomorrow morning and throughout the day. So I know the students were really disappointed to get an iPhone call, as they all tweeted to me already, but we wanted to make that call soon enough and early enough so that our parents could make some decisions about babysitters and such. So I apologize for the inconvenience that causes our families. I know it does disrupt the family life when we do that, but because it's going to be so frigid tomorrow morning and throughout the day, that decision was made. Board of Education, as Mr. Stuber has indicated, we have two very important reports to give to you this evening. One talks about some interesting changes that we're making to our kindergarten registration process, and Ms. Villa will be up shortly to share all those details with everyone. And then secondly, we have a program called our Academic Coaches that we are so proud of. We have five teachers that were hired this year for the express purpose of providing intervention to students at middle school and the high school, students who have identified needs through our data. And we have seen tremendous gains in academic success of these young folks because of the work of our academic coaches. And they are here this evening, and they're going to share some things about their program and the successes that they are seeing at our two upper buildings. But before we get to that, I, Board of Education, wanted to provide to you and to our community quite a bit of information this evening. So first of all, I want to apologize that my report this evening is going to be longer than usual. But what I've done over the last couple of days here is, as I have received communication from parents, community members, members of my staff, I started to put together my own questions and answers, and I wanted to share that with you all this evening. And I apologize if I read right from my script, but I wanted to be specific in the answers that I'm going to get to these questions. And this is all in response to the concern that some of our parents are raising in regard to the new state mandated assessments, known as the PARK assessments, the OCBA, the Ohio Computer-Based Assessment, and also the implementation of the Common Core standards, which have been here in our school district for some time. As Mr. Stuber indicated, even though we are implementing these things, oftentimes when we receive mandates from the Department of Education, we don't always 100 percent agree with all that is requested of us or required of us. But know that we continue to advocate at the state level. I have been in face-to-face communication with the President of the Senate, Senator Faber, with Frank LaRoche just last week, with Christina Rogner, and with other members of the legislation because we know that what's most important to us is what happens in the classroom, and that we believe that we want to provide our students with the very best education here in the Twinsburg City School District. So let me begin by providing, first of all, a historical look back at standardized assessment. You know, PARK assessments and the OCBA are nothing new with regard to standardized testing of kids. I can remember as a young teacher back in the '90s when the Ohio Proficiency Test were first implemented. I was teaching in Maple Heights when that happened, and that kind of was shaking us all to our core because never before that point in time was there such a thing as a state mandated assessment. Certainly, we had Ohio, the Iowa-based assessments. Those of you who've been in the area a long time might remember as a child, taking the Iowa tests. But in the '90s, we started with this thing called the Ohio Proficiency Test. And from that point, it changed to the Ohio Achievement Assessments, the OAAs, and the Ohio Graduation Tests. And every time there was a new kind of state standardized assessment that was required of our school district or school districts across the state, our educators had to step up to the plate. We had to grasp what all those requirements meant, and then we had to go to work to make sure that our students were most prepared to be successful on those assessments. So I bring that up to you just to remind everyone that standardized assessments are nothing new in our state, and they have been here for a very, very long time. With regard to these newest assessments, the PARK assessment and the OCBA, the reason why the rigor has changed is really for two reasons. First of all, what we have learned is that up to 40 percent of students who go on to college must take remedial coursework. And that was kind of a curious question for the educators across the state. Why is that the case? Well, what we have come to determine that perhaps we hadn't had our levels high enough for students, and that we had to raise the bar for kids so that when they entered college, that they were more prepared and didn't need to have remedial work at the college level. And then secondly, what we were learning is that our rankings on international assessments show that we were falling behind other countries, and that there was a need to step it up so that our kids, once they are able to graduate from college or begin a career, that they can actually compete in the world around them. So as Mr. Stuber indicated, the Common Core isn't all of what we're talking about. It isn't inclusive of science and social studies. The Common Core assessments are focused on math and English Language Arts. And the other assessments, those that have been created by the state of Ohio, the new learning standards, those are focusing on science and social studies. With regard to the assessments that are complementing those, the PARK assessment is speaking to math and English Language Arts, and the OCBA, the Ohio Computer-Based Assessments, will address the standards in science and social studies. So the next question is, why are all the standards changing? Approximately 75 percent of the standards remain the same. Some were just shifted by a grade level or two, and some are obviously new. The new standards are focusing more on the application of skills and problem-solving, and we believe that those are two very important things that our students have to have mastery of so that they are proficient and able to be successful in life after high school. We have seen quite a bit in the media of late about all of the technology that is used to support these new assessments. And Board of Education, I have to tell you, I've been out in the buildings the last two days as we've started to take the tests. Our tech staff has done a phenomenal job of preparing behind the scenes, putting together all of the structure, and we have been off and running with very limited problems. This evening, I asked Mr. Welker just to say a few things about the new labs because I think that they are very exciting places, not just for testing, but for any time we are wanting to use computer-based instruction in our classrooms for instructional purposes. So Chad, can you walk us through this and tell us a little bit about these new labs?
Sure. So we just put together a few pictures of our, a couple of our computer lab renovations, and we really appreciate the support of the Board of Education in renovating the old wood shop at the high school, and then also the old locker rooms at Dodge Intermediate. So first slide here. The top pictures, that's what our locker rooms looked like in June of the summer. And that was after we had to tear out all the lockers in the locker room. So you can see the before and after pictures. We now have over 60 computers and two labs at Dodge, and those are, so that's our renovated locker room, if you can believe it. So that's the first lab and the second lab at our Dodge Intermediate School. We also have two small groups, group rooms at Dodge, and this would be for smaller testing groups. If they, if a student needs help with accommodations, this is the smaller setting so that it's not as big. So we have two rooms, G114 and G118, and those are some pictures of those labs. At the high school, we renovated the old wood shop. And so there's some pictures up on the top of what it looked like in June of 2014. And you can tell in the bottom how drastically it changed. So those are two of the labs there. Again, a little over 60 computers. And then in the back, you can sort of see that there's two small group rooms as well. Same concept as Dodge for students who might need to take the test with accommodations or smaller groups. So again, we just wanted to thank the board. They've been great additions to our testing this week.
And again, Board of Education, you know that we don't use those labs specifically for testing. Those are used every single day of the year for classroom instruction. And the two labs at Dodge and the two labs at Twinsburg High School are phenomenal places, not only for the kids, but we have engaged our staff in professional development using those resources. So again, thank you for your support of that request. And really, being able to rededicate the space to something that's really very valuable to the educational process has gone a long way here, so thank you. So the next question I got was, are the new tests too hard? And here is my answer to that. Whenever there is a change in testing, the results will change. We might expect a natural drop in the results that this is the first year of implementation, and we really haven't had any benchmark data to be able to compare this against. So we're very excited about receiving the students' test results next year so that we can take a look at where students have challenges with regard to mastering the standards, and then, of course, where we are able to accelerate students and push them to the next level. There was a question about the cut scores. What are the cut scores for the new assessments? At this point, the cut score has not been set. In some states, instances, this is an interesting fact. The current OAAs and OGTs, the Ohio Achievement Assessment and the Ohio Graduation Test, had a proficient score that could range from just 30 percent to 50 percent. Pretty low, if you think about it. And what we're hearing is that the Department of Education is suggesting that the new assessments will have a proficient range around the 60 percent mark. So that's a little bit of a change. And of course, that rigor that we heard was going to be here is obviously also going to be impactful in the testing scores. I hear a lot, a statement being made, and that is, we're teaching to the test. Well, actually, that's just really semantics, isn't it? We are teaching the standards, and the tests are testing whether or not the students are mastering the standards. Therefore, we are testing what we are teaching in our classrooms. Next question. Is the Twinsburg City School District staff been prepared for all of this new implementation? You know, our curriculum department has worked really hard along with our Department of Pupil Personnel, Mrs. Farthing and Mrs. Trapegen and the staff that they support. For the past four years, at least as long as I've been here, and when Mr. Marlowe was here before me, staying on top of all of these curriculum initiatives has been their focus, and they have done a tremendous job. You could ask any member of the staff here, the teaching staff, how often Jen and Lori and Denise and Marveta are in the classroom supporting what happens, providing the very best professional development. We've had waiver days, we've had professional development days. Our staff engages in professional learning communities, opportunities, and we believe that our staff has had plenty of support. They need something. My curriculum department and my pupil personnel department is there to support them. And they have done a great job, and the teachers have done so well to collaborate together, to learn together, to build new curriculum together. And it has been this collaborative effort that can lead me to say that our staff has been prepared because we have provided opportunities for that to occur. And what about our kids? Same is true. Our staff has done a phenomenal job of preparing our students for change, implementing the new standards, teaching a new rigorous curriculum, providing interventions. The presentation that you're going to hear this evening, Board of Education, about our academic coaches, that's an example of some of the opportunities that we have provided our students to be able to get that extra something if they were unable to miss a particular skill or need assistance. And we have programs also to provide acceleration. So a lot has been done to help our students prepare. I know that within the last month, Mrs. Farthing and Lori Slattery, who is our curriculum supervisor, have actually been in the classrooms of the kids who are taking these new assessments, walking them through what it's like to assess using the computer, helping them understand the differences. You know, they have taken them by the hand and provided lots and lots of support. So not only have we supported our teachers, we have supported the kids with that individual attention. And the reason for that is so that our kids are calm. I think that the best thing that we can provide for them is the feeling of confidence in whatever new situation that they encounter in their life. Feeling that they're confident and that they can master whatever lies ahead of them is most important. So what about stress? You know, I think that that's an important thing that we talk about a lot. And sometimes adults feel stress maybe more than kids, but I think kids also feel stress. And what I can say is this. We can create any headline that we want. If we want to talk about the stress that's related to the test, and that's all we're talking about, well, then that's what the headline will be. But if we want to talk about the headline of the fact that our kids are confident and that they can do this, we've raised the bar and they're able to succeed, that's the headline that we're going to read and feel, and that's what the kids are going to feel about their ability to do well in whatever we put ahead of them so that they're successful in life. The next question talks about consequences for students. And for grades three through eight, the new assessments don't provide, at this point, any consequences except for the third-grade reading assessment. The law known as the Third Grade Reading Guarantee remains that students who are unable to pass the third-grade reading assessment are going to be retained in the third grade unless they are able to pass either that state assessment, the OAA, or another assessment allowed by the Ohio Department of Education. Those that haven't passed the fall testing will still take the Ohio Achievement Assessment reading test and not the new PARK assessment. And again, we're talking about our third graders. Under the new graduation requirements, high school students must score at least 18 points in order to receive and earn a high school diploma. This is something that many of our parents may not be aware of. This is brand-new information called the new graduation requirements. If students do not complete the high school assessments unless legislation changes or unless the student is able to reach other certain targets, including applicable SAT and ACT scores or the passage of the Work Keys Assessment, they will not earn enough points to earn a high school diploma. When students begin taking AP courses, some of those tests will count in place of the PARK. But if they don't take the others, they will not have earned enough points to obtain a high school diploma. So that's new information, and it's very important information for our parents and our high school students to understand. So the next question was, should my child take the new state assessments? And my answer, of course, is yes. The results will provide information to our parents and our school staff and opportunity about how well our students are learning and achieving success, making progress toward achieving all of these standards. I believe our students are going to be absolutely fine. Their grades are not dependent on the PARK assessment. Retention and promotion are also not contingent on passing the PARK, except, of course, for that third-grade reading guarantee. And we're not talking about the PARK again. We're talking about the OAA when we're talking about the third-grade reading guarantee. Let's just see how well our students do, and then we'll make the adjustments that are necessary in our classrooms so that all of our kids can find success. So Board of Education, one of the questions that keeps coming up is, what about the test scores? And who has access to our students' test scores? I'd like to address that right now. The testing companies, there's actually two of them. There is Pearson for the PARK, and there's AIR or the American Institute of Research for the OCBA assessments in science and social studies. They will complete the scoring of the tests. And then Pearson and then the AIR group will then report the students' scores to school districts. Designated personnel at the district level will have access to the test results. The district's EMIS coordinator will input student scores into our EMIS database, which is what the state collects. The information entered into EMIS is done so using a nondescript number known as the statewide student identifier, or SSID. SSIDs are randomly generated numbers. Only the school district has access to know which SSID number is attached to which student. There is no student identifiable information at the state level beside the SSID nondescript number. Students' test scores are not sent to the federal government or anybody else. An interesting thing here is there's a myth that the Common Core standards will result in a national database of private student information. And I looked this up because this is kind of curious to me. I hadn't even heard that parent pose that question. Excuse me. And the fact is that there are no data collection requirements for states adopting these standards. Standards define expectations for what students should know and be able to do by the end of each grade. Implementing the Common Core state standards does not require data collection. The means of assessing students and the use of the data that result from those assessments are up to the discretion of each state and are separate and unique from the Common Core. So again, not even the Ohio Department of Education knows how Chad Welker would do on the test. They might have a number that's attached to Chad, but they wouldn't know that that's Chad's number. And that information is used for longitudinal information, understanding how trends are across the state of Ohio, what students in the third grade are doing well on, what students in the third grade are not doing so well on. And then that information is given back to school districts so that we improve what we're doing in our classrooms. The next question is, is it true that there will not be any negative impact to the school district if my child does not complete the assessments? Please know that the district will be impacted by the non-test scores we receive for students as we will receive zeros as these test scores. This will impact our value-added scores, our student growth measures, the ratings we earn for performance index, performance indic- we earn for performance index, performance indicators, et cetera, on the school district's report card. Yes, there will not be an overall grade assigned to our school district this year, but there will be grades assigned to the other areas on the local report cards. We will see the same format and accountability measures on the local report card for the fourteen-fifteen school year as we did on the thirteen-fourteen local report card. Nothing's going to change there. Should the percentage of students who are not tested reach five percent of all students or individual subgroups of students, and a subgroup could be like students with disabilities, black students, white students, those are all of our subgroups, our school district may be in danger of failing various accountability measures. Our community members evaluated the school district's performance using last year's local report card, and they will do the same thing again when the fourteen-fifteen local report card is released by the Ohio Department of Education. State funding is also directly related to state assessments, as well as to the teachers' evaluations. Finally, my staff will not be able to use the curricul-- I'm sorry. My staff will not be able to adjust the curriculum based on our students' performance results. Therefore, classroom instruction will not be as focused and directed as it could be with that information. So what about this legislation calling for safe harbor? Doesn't that address all of these issues? And the answer, Board of Education, is no, it does not. It doesn't address the graduation requirements or the third grade reading guarantee. It just states that the students won't be retained, promoted, or can it affect somebody's grades. It doesn't do that now, so we're not sure what the point is. It doesn't really address the issues that people think that it will. So what about parents' Fourteenth Amendment rights? We acknowledge that parental right to exercise care, custody, and control over their children in most situations. It is not the intention of the Twinsburg City School District to interfere with that right. However, we also acknowledge our lawful obligation as a public school district to administer all state mandated assessments to applicable students. An Ohio public school district is never obliged to obtain parental consent to administer standardized tests. Instead, we follow the directive of the Ohio law to test applicable students with state required assessments. Should the Common Core standards be repealed? I cannot support the recent interest by some individuals to pass a resolution to repeal the Common Core standards. In 2010, the Ohio Board of Education overwhelmingly approved the new standards, and since that time, public school districts across the state of Ohio, including the Twinsburg City School District, have been engaged in the implementation of these new standards. Educators have engaged in countless hours of professional development and planning, and financial resources have been spent to align the curriculum and implement the accountability measures. If the Common Core standards are repealed, we understand that old standards from the state of Massachusetts would be adopted for use by Ohio's classroom teachers for the fifteen-sixteen school year, sixteen-seventeen school year, and seventeen-eighteen school year. In turn, the Ohio Department of Education would develop a new set of standards in the four subject areas for the use beginning in the 2018 and 2019 school year. This would mean that our current eighth-grade students would be taught under three different sets of standards before graduating from Twinsburg High School. Certainly, this will cause frustration and confusion by parents, students, teachers, and administrators, as well as our community members. The many resources expended over the past several years to implement the Common Core standards will have been wasted. While there can be a reasonable difference of opinion about certain aspects of Common Core standards, we personally believe that these curricular guidelines are necessary to prepare our students for successful lives after high school. Our schoolchildren deserve a common system of education instruction that is based on data and the collective wisdom of educators. Constant change does not serve our schoolchildren well. The Common Core state standard should be implemented, and after an appropriate amount of time has passed, they should be evaluated to determine their educational impact on our students. To change course now would be wrong for Ohio and for our students. Excuse me, I'm talking a lot. So finally, Board of Education, what does your superintendent feel about this whole matter? First of all, I believe in accountability and having the students take the new state tests. However, I also believe there is too much testing going on in our classrooms. That is the message I wrote in October in the superintendent's message, which was posted on our district website, as well as what I communicated to state legislators personally in September, November, and February. While I appreciate using the state student performance data gathered from the Park assessments to determine the mastery of skills, I believe that the number of hours that will be dedicated to state mandated assessments are inordinate and unnecessary. I believe that the day-to-day formative assessments developed and used by our teachers have greater instructional impact on our students. Formative assessments provide the data teachers need to determine mastery of skills, as well as provide evidence regarding students' strengths and areas of challenge. Armed with formative assessments and that data, which is then coupled with summative assessment data, our teachers can diagnose each child's learning profile and make adjustments to instructional practices that have the greatest impact on student achievement. These adjustments can occur almost immediately as each student's location on the learning continuum is identified and a plan of action is developed to meet the learner's needs. I believe that state mandated assessments, such as the New Park assessments, hold an important place in measuring our students' success. However, as I have communicated with legislators and other groups to lobby for a one-year moratorium on all accountability measures against students, teachers, and the district, I understand that federal law requires Park assessments for accountability purposes. I respect that school districts must be accountable when it comes to educating our students. I understand that our community members need to know that their tax dollars are invested in a high-performing school district. However, I believe that the day-to-day formative assessments developed and used by our teachers have greater instructional impact on our students than state mandated assessments. I believe that we should analyze the results from this year's test administration to make instructional changes that ultimately increase the academic achievement of our students. I believe we should review how well the technology actually worked and make adjustments so that we can increase the efficiency of the electronic testing platform if necessary. Overall, the goal of assessments and the implementation of the new standards is to raise the achievement level of students and to develop students who are thinkers, learners, and problem-solvers who can successfully navigate through life and be ready to go on to a career or to be successful in college following high school. So Board of Education, I just wanted to be perfectly clear to you and to the members of our community where I stand in this debate. The last two weeks, those who work closely with me understand that we have been fielding lots of parent conversations, lots of phone calls, lots of emails, lots of correspondence. And there is a lot of misinformation that is out and about, about the Park assessments, about the Common Core. And we wanted to make sure that the community understood perfectly well the situation and the stance the school district has regarding these different initiatives. Do you have any questions, Board?
Thank you very much, very thorough.
Thank you. So enough for me. I think we have some students that we would like to celebrate this evening. So without further ado, I would like to ask Ms. Villa and Mr. Asti to come forward to celebrate some of the great things going on with our little ones from Wilcox Primary School. I don't have them. And Mr. Gatawski, there's no microphone up here. Oh, Mr. Asti, yeah.
So, boys and girls, when you come forward to be recognized this evening, of course, Ms. Villa's here and Assistant Principal Mr. Scott Asti's here. And this is Mrs. Kate King-Criswell. She's Vice President of the Board of Education, and she has a wonderful pin for you to receive upon coming forward to be recognized. And, boys and girls, when you come up, shake Ms. Criswell's hand, Ms. Villa's hand, Mr. Asti's hand, and Mr. Walker's hand way over there. And Mr. Walker will help you stand up here on the stage. And we would like all the boys and girls to remain up here till the whole group is up here, because we know we want to see all of you together, and your moms and dads want to take a nice photo of you as well. So we have lots of little ones to celebrate. So we're going to begin with a kindergarten child from Mrs. Iyani's class. This is Cameron Banus. Mrs. Iyani is honored to nominate Cameron for the Wilcox Rocks Because of Me Award. Cameron is a wonderful role model to her peers. She works hard at everything she does and always has a smile on her face. Cameron is a delightful member of her class and always willing to help. Keep up the great work, Cameron. Wilcox rocks because of you. Next, from Mrs. Lowe's class, we have Alyssa Giancola. Alyssa is an excellent student who always strives to do her best and who steps up to help Mrs. Lowe or other classmates in need. She is a caring and responsible student who is a friend to all. Mrs. Lowe states, "It is a joy to have Alyssa in her class every day this year." Next, from Mrs. Jaskowitz's kindergarten class, we have Taylor Grant. Taylor rocks because she comes to school ready to listen and learn. She's a great worker and always strives to do her best. Taylor is a super friend and gets along well with all of her classmates. She's a good citizen and follows all the rules. Taylor rocks because her smile lights up the room. Next, from Ms. Hannah's classroom, we have Olivia Hawk. Olivia is a good friend to everyone in her classroom. She always participates in class discussions and remembers to raise her hand. Olivia is a hard worker and has already grown so much this year. Mrs. Hannah's classroom in Wilcox rocks because of Olivia. Next, from Mrs. Burton's class, we have Garrett Monday. Garrett exemplifies what it means to be a tiger. Every day, he displays responsibility, respect for others, and is always willing to help students in need. He's a great role model, caring friend, and example of why Wilcox rocks. Next, from Mrs. DeCola's class, we have Jack Nelson. Jack is a very responsible and respectful student who puts forth great effort in everything he does. He cares about his classmates and offers support when they need it. Jack is a great role model because he continually demonstrates the character traits of being responsible, respectful, caring, and safe. Next on to our big kids, our first graders, we have Ava Basil from Mrs. Nysley's class. Ava is an awesome student. She is a kind, sweet girl who loves to learn. She's a good friend to all and likes to help the other students. Ava is always ready to learn each day and loves to read anything and everything. Mrs. Nysley says, "Congrats, Ava. You are definitely a rocking Wilcox student each day in my classroom." Next, from Mrs. Ferillo's classroom, we have Baron Grant. Baron deserves the award for Wilcox rocks because of me because he is a leader and a great role model. He makes good decisions in and out of the classroom. He loves to participate and learn new things. He is the first to try something new and is a great helper to others in need. Mrs. Ferillo is very proud of his accomplishments. You rock, Baron. Next, from Mrs. Browning's class, we have Camden Hill. Camden is one of the kindest and most dedicated students in his class. He is always complimenting his classmates with words of "good job" and "way to go." He works very hard and gives one hundred and ten percent daily. Mrs. Browning is so proud of him. You rock, Camden. Next to Mrs. Fink's class, we have Ria Patel. Ria is a fantastic student who always gives her best effort in and out of the classroom. She is not only a good student, but a fabulous friend. She is always kind, caring, and supportive of others. Ria is truly a tiger-strong little girl, and she is tiger-proud. Wilcox rocks because of students like her. From Mrs. Kane's classroom, we have Kennedy Pladek. Mrs. Kane has nominated Kennedy for the Wilcox Rocks Award because she is an excellent role model in her classroom. She exemplifies being a good citizen. She can always be counted upon to do the right thing. She is quick to offer a hand to a friend. There has recently been a new student move into her class, and Kennedy has been a huge help to her. She shows patience and kindness. Mrs. Kane thanks you for making her class a great place to be. And finally, we have from Mr. Hill's class, Cameron Puckey. Mr. Hill says that Cameron is a pleasure to have in class. She goes above and beyond to help her teacher and classmates. Cameron is a caring classmate who works cooperatively with all of her peers. She helps clean the classroom and is the first to help when the teacher needs anything. Great job, Cameron. Please join me in congratulating these outstanding Students of the Month from Wilcox Primary Now, boys and girls, if you can just hold your certificate forward so that it faces out, and put it up right in front of your stomachs. There you go. And I know your moms and dads want to take a nice photo of all of you, so your best smiles, please. All right, one more round of applause as our youngsters are seated. I'd now like to invite forward our principals from George G. Dodge Intermediate School. We have Mrs. Worsler, the building principal, Mr. Doug Hyam, one of the assistants, and Mr. Ron Holland, our second assistant principal, from our intermediate building. And Dodge Tigers, you know that when your name is called, please come forward and shake hands with Mrs. Criswell and Mrs. Worsler, Mr. Holland and Mr. Hyam. And then please stand in front of the table so that we can recognize the whole group when everybody gets forward. So at Dodge, these students were selected from their Cub community. They stand out from other students with their outstanding leadership qualities, citizenship, academic performance and efforts, social skills, and overall accomplishments. We are very proud to announce the Tiger Cubs Students of the Month. And here we go, from our fourth grade, we have Julia Mahalik. Moving up to our fifth graders, we have Alexander Bliler. And then moving up to our sixth graders, we have Calvin Gibson. Katherine Okuma. She thanked me for tomorrow. That's great. And Carissa Tanner. Let's give a round of applause to these outstanding Students of the Month from Dodge. Okay, guys, you want to hold your certificate forward so that your parents can get a nice photo of you? That would be great. All right, one more round of applause for these outstanding Dodge students. Thank you very much. Thank you, boys and girls. You may be seated. Now, I'd like to ask Mr. Popovich, one of our assistant principals from Twinsburg High School, to come forward. We have a lot of high school students to celebrate this evening, so as soon as he can make his way through the door here. Oh, and also, the high school principal is here, Mrs. Turingo. Welcome, Mrs. Turingo.
Yeah, I found her in the parking lot, so we're all good. Thank you. Okay, thank you for waiting patiently, high schoolers. First thing we want to begin with this evening is our monthly recognition for our Tiger-strong students. This began actually in the fall this year. And for those of you that are not aware, that, you know, each month, we have a committee that selects students that are nominated by staff members for various reasons, making up the qualities of what it is to be Tiger-strong, which, you know, we're talking about being safe, a team player, respectful, organized, noble, goal-oriented, and any other various reasons as to why they may be selected. So this evening, I do have six students, and what I'm going to ask is, you know, I'll call up each student, read the reason why or which teacher nominated that student. I'm going to ask all six to stay standing here at the end, so photo group op two, and then we'll move on with the next piece. So our first Student of the Month is ninth grader Shalan Sparks. Okay, Shalan was nominated by our science teacher, Mrs. Kurt. Mrs. Kurt states that Shalan is a very respectful and responsible student. She has exhibited making very good choices, that she takes in how others will be affected when she's doing those, and she's very caring and considerate of her peers as well as her teachers. And actually, she was brought up by two other staff members to me, one that was actually spot-subbing for Mrs. Kurt's class that day and said, "Do you know this young lady named Shalan Sparks, Mr. Popovich? You probably should consider her for Tiger Strong Student of the Month." I said, "She happened to get nominated for that." So she's being noticed for her kindness, and keep it up, Shalan. Thank you. Next, we have sophomore Rachel Cardeman. Rachel was nominated by her geometry teacher, Mrs. Baron. Mrs. Baron states, "I would like to nominate Rachel Cardeman for her improvement in geometry. She started off the year maybe struggling a little bit, and with really persistence and dedication to her schoolwork, she has taken the time to come in for extra help after school to go over what she doesn't understand and consistently does her homework. She's raised her grade considerably," and she knows that, as Mrs. Baron does, "but she's really just kind of noticed the great difference from the start of the year and says she's very respectful and always participates in class. And other teachers note that as well, but Rachel's definitely had a great improvement in that subject, and Mrs. Baron wanted to make sure that she was recognized for that." So congratulations, Rachel. Next, I have actually two juniors. I'm going to call them both up at the same time because the same teacher wrote some stories about each of them, and they're kind of relating to the same thing. So those are juniors, Driana Smith and Jessica Peffer. Okay, they were nominated by Mr. Monacki. Mr. Monacki states about both Driana and Jessica have shown a willingness to work with students in class who either struggle with the content or don't have anyone to participate with. Driana consistently partners up with a student who is an English, as a second language student, ESL student, and she often does labs, and actually used to do labs and assignments by himself, but Driana has taken the initiative to interact with him and try to make him feel more welcome, and he's noticed a considerable difference in that student's work during that timeframe. Jessica has been working with another student class who really just struggles in the topic of chemistry, and she takes her own time and tries to help that student because she sees that, you know, I struggle in reaching her as the teacher. He states that "this helps me out because she acts as a tutor so I can help the other students, and both girls are just great, and I thought they deserved some recognition for those efforts." So, thank you, ladies. Next, we have junior Donald Taylor. I was happy to see Donald. I've actually known him since freshman year. He's one of my favorites, just personal side note. But Mr. Chapel nominated Donald. He said, "I would like to nominate Donald Taylor simply because he works extremely hard in math class, completing his homework consistently and asking questions when necessary. He always does a great job of participating in class. I think what stands out more is just in the hallways, Donald is extremely very courteous, always greeting you with a smile. Anytime he's ever been asked of anything, you know, maybe by me even as an administrator, to help out, he offers things very from an honest perspective, and for that, that's something that's much appreciated, especially at the high school level." So, Donald, congratulations. Thank you. And our last Student of the Month is hopefully on the court beating Solon right now. That senior Jamie, excuse me, Jamie Sanborn. She was nominated for a number of reasons by actually more than one teacher, but one of the main things that, you know, they pointed out about Jamie is, other than the fact that she obviously works hard, is extremely respectful, and, you know, is very kind to her peers and everything, she's just one of those kids that, no matter what may be affecting her that day, she always carries a positive frame of mind, and as a senior leader in multiple sports, she's definitely been what we would love to call a student-athlete in our community and our high school. So Jamie, I knew she wouldn't be here. She told me that. I understood. Good reason why while she's over there, hopefully beating Solon. But, you know, we want to congratulate her in regards to that. So again, those are our Students of the Month. Anybody wants to grab a group photo quick, and then we'll move on? Thank you, guys. Okay, next, at this point, we'd like to honor, really, we'd like to honor actually a couple of staff members first, so I'm going to actually call up Mrs. Sharon Mosenko and Mrs. Julie DeCiana. Please come on up. And this stems into our second portion of the high school recognitions this evening. And Mrs. Sharon Kozak couldn't be here this evening. She is actually involved as well in photography. But Mrs. DeCiana teaches Art I at the high school, and Mrs. Mosenko teaches Art II, Ceramics Advanced AP, the whole shebang after that. But Mrs. Kozak, obviously, she couldn't be here. And what we have tonight, and I'm going to call all of these students up, I'm going to acknowledge what, you know, they've been awarded, and Mrs. Mosenko is then going to kind of explain after I call the students up, you know, the Scholastics Art Competition that our students participated in. This happens every year. We have outstanding talent that unless you come up to the high school and see some of these displays, sometimes you don't recognize it, but, you know, some of the students that are here this evening have brought their work, which is great. So, without further ado, I'm going to make it about them. Our first tonight is Emma Cristofell. She was an Honorable Mention. I don't know if Emma's here. Emma, come on up. Next students, Jessica Burbayer. She was an Honorable Mention. Next student is Taylor St. Andrusy, Honorable Mention and Silver Key winner. Next, we have Madeline Sudnick, Silver and Gold Key winner. Catherine Elmacher, Honorable Mention. Shayla Gower, Gold Key winner. Melissa Heiss, Silver Key winner. Jasmine Jenkins, Honorable Mention and Silver Key winner. Samantha Karabek, Two Honorable Mentions. Maggie McGlunphy, Honorable Mention. Sarah McGlunphy, Gold Key winner. Michaela McLean, Honorable Mention. Riley Wrist, Five Honorable Mentions, Two Silver Keys, One Gold Key, and a Partridge in a Pear Tree. Couldn't resist, sorry. Hallie Shaw, Honorable Mention. Alyssa Whittington, Honorable Mention. Ally Wood, Two Honorable Mentions. Andrew Waits, Gold Key winner. And Abby Zona, Honorable Mention. I'm going to hand the mic over to Mrs. Mosenko at this time.
Thank you. I'll make it quick here. I was really surprised, well, I can't say that I was surprised. I wasn't surprised because I have such talented art students here at Twinsburg High School, and I want to congratulate them on their success in the 2015 North Central Ohio Scholastic Art Competition. The judges chose your artwork out of 3,691 pieces of artwork for our region. And this award signifies to parents, teachers, the community, and colleges that a student is accomplished artist. The awards offer opportunities for creative teens to earn recognition, exhibition of their work, publication, and scholarships. Works are judged on originality, technical skill, and a personal vision and voice. On March 16th, students and teachers will be notified of National Award winners. Students that receive Gold Keys in Regional will be judged for National Awards, where their artwork will be on display at Carnegie Hall in New York City. So we're going to cross our fingers here and hope for the best. I'm very proud of my students here at Twinsburg High School. They are very talented, and I am so proud to be their art teacher, and I'm sure Mrs. DeCiana feels the same way. So, congratulations. I have one more. I have congratulations to Leah Edwards on her Red Ribbon Award in the 2015 Cleveland Clinic Expression Show. This year's award-winning work is currently on display at the Global Center for Health Innovation until Friday, March 13th. Out of 1,200 entries, Leah's project and 56 others were published in the 2015 Expressions Book. Mrs. Turingo has it here. It is seen across the country and worldwide. So we're really proud of Leah here. She has a published piece of work. The Expressions Program engages high school students from across Ohio and around the world in a creative exploration of science and medicine. Through project-based, peer-to-peer learning, students interpret research studies conducted by the Cleveland Clinic Summer Interns, producing an extraordinary array of science and inspired projects. Leah, congratulations again on your award-winning artwork. I always am so pleased with your high caliber work and your dedication to the arts.
High school students, if you could just pose for your parents. I know there's a lot of proud mom and dad and family members here that would love to take a photo of all of you, so if you have your artwork, hold it up like I told the little ones to hold their certificates. What an impressive bunch of young adults here. We are so very proud of each and every one of you. I can't draw a straight line, so I'm at awe of all of that wonderful work, and congratulations to you as you move on through high school and beyond. You are definitely very talented artistic students. We congratulate you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Stewart, that concludes my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Popovich. We'll move on in the agenda to committee reports. Before I do that, if there's anyone who needs to leave, now would be a time to do that. You're certainly welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but I know there's maybe a few who have some homework to do tonight. But there's no school tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
Two days worth. I didn't get excused from work, so. All right, while they're leaving quietly, we'll move into committee reports, and I know the curriculum team has some stuff on the agenda tonight, so I'll let you go first.
Okay. I can be wordy, so I'm going to keep this brief. I'm going to try to keep it brief. We met yesterday for the curriculum and technology meeting, and it was a big crowd as usual. A lot of interested, parents had joined and staff, and it was a very productive meeting. Some of the things that they discussed, just quickly with some updates, and I'm sure if you have any questions about curriculum updates, Ms. Farthing will answer them sometime, too. But one of the things that is, that they're researching right now is online, like Google Docs and Office 365 for staff and students. Another thing that is up is the social science teachers at Dodge are piloting new materials this year, and RBC is piloting a Reading Plus program. And another highlight is that the GARG grant for math and science for students in grades fourth grade is still ongoing. There are a few things up for adoption tonight, and one item is a U.S. history book for Unbroken, and I know maybe some of you have seen the movie, and Ms. Farthing plugged it very well yesterday at the meeting, and we are going to be using the Young Adult adaptation if this passes. this passes. And that will be used for social studies at the high school level. Couple other things that are up for approval is the adoption of AP Art History Course of Study. We have up for adoption the AP European History Course of Study, AP Human Geography Course of Study, and adoption of Pre-Engineering Technology Course of Study. And a few highlights with that. I know with the Career Technology Education Program, the engineering, pre-engineering course, this course will greatly improve the STEM program at the middle school, and it will be available to all students. Let's see, what else we have? Since I promised to try to keep it brief, I'm going to keep it at that. And if you have any questions, you can contact Mrs. Farthing, and these will be up on the website shortly for you to view.
Just a quick addition, too. I think it's worth noting that we're continuing our expansion of AP offerings. I was really excited to see three additional courses, if I'm not mistaken. And the teachers that came with the recommendations for the courses were very, very excited about them, which I got to believe is motivating to the students that they chat about, you know, attending these courses next year. So, it's very exciting to see some additions. And I also was really excited to see the pre-engineering, the pursuit of the pre-engineering class, especially as a parent of a daughter who's now, you know, pursuing that at school. I think it's just a fantastic addition to our curriculum. So, I'm excited to see that. And then one last sort of thought, Mrs. Powers, after your introduction and your report regarding the Common Core. It was interesting because as you were chatting about the length of time we've been talking about preparing for it, I've been on the curriculum committee for a number of years now, and my recollection goes back, goes back as far as two years ago, if I'm sure it's even longer with my fuzzy memory, that we've been talking about the preparations and the modifications we needed to make to our curriculum, our technology, everything in preparation for this very, very significant change. So, it's not, I think it feels very different and startling to the community because the park assessment is upon us, but the preparation for this has been very, very longstanding, and it's involved many, 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 many people and many, many, many hours. So, this, so for whatever it's worth, it just, you know, as you were talking about it, it occurred to me, this is, you know, I know it feels new to the community, but it's, and it's very, it's a, you know, hot item politically right now, but it's been around actually for quite a while.
Mr. Aher will often say anything in a public school district is often compared to the Titanic. In order to make a change, it's a very slow and long process to finally get to where you need to go. And so, we're at the end of that long journey.
Anything else on curriculum? Kat, I know you have, I'm sorry. I know you have a couple tonight.
Yeah, I have a couple. I have athletics as well as the buildings and grounds. I'll start with the RBC report. We have the seventh grade basketball team finished their season with a 15 and 3 overall record. They won the NOC East Conference Championship. The Tigers defeated both Garfield Heights and Shaker Heights in the tournament held at Hudson Middle School the last week in January. Congratulations to Coach Velbeck and the entire seventh grade boys' basketball team on an outstanding season. Our eighth grade girls' basketball team is off to an outstanding start. They are currently nine and one record through their first 10 games. Our RBC cheerleaders were treated to an excellent night of hospitality from our THS cheerleaders at the Varsity Boys Basketball Game on Tuesday, February 17th. The THS and RBC cheerleaders combined to cheer during the Varsity Basketball Game, giving the girls a taste of what is to come as they move to THS. Thanks to Coach Wilma and Coach Conway for organizing the event, and we have just a great group of cheerleaders. The RBC wrestling team kept its outstanding tradition of success throughout the wrestling season, and I saw Coach Davis out there, great leader of the program. The Tigers had a 20 and 4 record in duel meets. They also placed highly in each of the following tournaments. At the Canfield Duels, they took second. Green Tournament, second. CVCA Duel Tournament, second. They were winner of the Cable Nine Try Match versus Aurora in Nordonia. And out of 37 teams in the TAB Tournament, 11 wrestlers placed in their weight class with second place overall team finish. So, those of you that are not familiar with the TAB Wrestling Tournament, it is one of the largest and considered actually one of the best in the state and country. So, for our kids to place out so well is a great accomplishment. As far, also in addition to that, our first-year wrestler in eighth grade, Nick Baker, finished second overall in his weight class at the TAB Tournament. And Nolan Hoag and Austin Seferati were both champions of their weight class at the tournament. So, just a really great things happening over at RBC for all of our athletes. At the high school, we have Megan Brown has signed an NCAA Letter of Intent to continue her academic and athletic career, which is softball, at Slippery Rock University. Suzie DeZittaro signed her NCAA Letter of Intent to continue at Ohio Dominican University for soccer. Lexi Cook signed an NCAA Letter of Intent with the University of Akron for soccer. And Mike Bell was named the new head coach of the Varsity Football Program, which we had the opportunity at the last meeting to meet him, and some of the athletes were here and met him. And I know he has started working with the kids, so they're very excited, and we're very excited to have him on board. Additionally, we have Rick Jenkins, who will be named the new head coach of the Varsity Softball Team. Our girls' basketball has a record of 16 and 5 and placed Solon at home this evening, as was already mentioned. They will begin their OHSA playoffs this weekend with a home game versus John Adams on Saturday at 1:00. So, anybody that's available Saturday at 1:00, support our amazing girls' basketball program. Boys' basketball has a record of 4 and 14 and placed Solon, at Solon, on Friday evening. They begin their OHSA playoffs at Cleveland Heights on March 4th at 7:00. Our girls' bowling, they've enjoyed one of the best seasons in school history and competes tomorrow evening for the NOC Championship at Stowe Kent Lanes. Very excited for the prospects in this year's OHSA tournament. Our boys' bowling has shown great improvement this year and added the roster size from the previous season. Our swimming and diving, girls won their second consecutive NOC Championship this season. Swimmers Sam Gardino, Joey Gardino, Josh Vargo, Alex Kinzer, Matt Olson, Brad Beerworth, and divers Maddie Posk, Sarah McGlumpy, Alyssa McKenzie, all advanced to Ohio High School Athletic Association District Meet this weekend. For wrestling, we had an excellent season, and we're looking forward to our home, last home match, which will be Senior Night tomorrow evening at THS. But since tomorrow evening, we'll have to probably look at when that will be rescheduled. Finished 10th as a team at the NOC Meet, and Noah Edward was the NOC Champion. Hockey, lost in the Ohio High School Athletic Association Playoff Game to West G last night. Had a very good and competitive season considering how young the team was. Ryan DeRosa, Kylie DeRosa, and Travis Zaschowski were all named to the GCHSHL All Division Team. In gymnastics, they exceeded expectations and were, I'm sorry, very competitive this season. Olivia Bartulovic had a tremendous season, and the team will compete in their NOC Conference Meet this Sunday. For cheerleading, for the third straight year in a row, our cheerleading girls, they do a competitive, and a lot of people don't realize, our cheerleaders do have, they get to compete as well, and they have advanced to the state tournament, which is awesome as well. And they will be on March 1st at St. John Arena in Columbus. So, that is athletics. And I'll give a quick overview of buildings and grounds. Some exciting things, we are doing some replacement of the turf up at the stadium. That will be happening in June or July after we do our events up there for Relay for Life. In conjunction with the city, we're looking at new lanes, line lanes in the swimming pool and the backstroke flags. We're doing some work on the tennis courts, also the hot water tanks in conjunction with the city for the swimming pools. The parking lots at THS, that will happen after the Cost of Freedom and before, hopefully before, on Twins Days. We're looking at repaving the RBC bus lot and some more work over at the Wilcox entrance. And I'm almost done. Roofing, which Chad and Mrs. Powers have been working on an overall, general of our entire facilities. And one of the things that we're looking at is to conduct a thermal graphic scan, and that's going to kind of help us with the understanding of where our roofs are at and what we need to do to move forward. So, I think that's great. We're working on that. We have some boiler projects at Wilcox and Bissel. In transportation, we're going to be purchasing, purchasing some new buses. We are going to be installing some more security cameras, digital radios, and GPSs in our buses. And we also are installing some radio systems, some Marx radios in our district. And as far as technology, we are switching over to a core switch upgrade, and we're maintaining the cycle of computers and projects, which means, and something that we really do well is we're proactive on keeping our inventory of buses, computers, things that we know are going to need replacement. Mrs. Powers and Mrs. Welker, or Mr. Welker, are very good about knowing that, you know, so we get new buses every year, we're keeping up on computers, and I just wanted to compliment them as well. Initially, when we got onto the Board of Education, they presented to us, you know, we're going to need these computer labs, and we were all questioning why. And I just read an interesting article about some of the schools that are just not, were not prepared for these park assessments, and that they're, they're asking for more time. Because we have the good leadership that we do, we are ready. We've prepared our children. We have the facilities to give these, administer these tests. So, kudos to you guys for being proactive and, you know, knowing what was coming and making sure that we had the best for our kids. So, thank you.
Mrs. Powers, I'd like to turn things back over to you. I know you have two very special administrative reports tonight.
We do. The first one, Board of Education, is going to be presented by our Wilcox Primary School Principal, Ms. Lynn Villa. Board of Education, we are going to be changing the process for registering kindergarteners to begin their school experience here in the Twinsburg City School District. We will be welcoming the class of 2028, boy, does that make me feel old, to begin classes here in the school district in the fall. And Ms. Villa and her staff have been concerned about the manner in which we register kids because it really didn't give us enough information about the children before they hit our classrooms day number one. And so, Lynn was proactive and came to see me and said, hey, you know, we'd really like to make some adjustments. My staff is behind this. What do you think? We gave them the green light, and here we are today with a presentation for you. So, welcome Lynn. Thanks for your proactive leadership, and we're interested to hear about all these changes.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. Good evening. My goal tonight is to share some information about our new kindergarten readiness screening, but first I want to define what readiness really is and explain why this is such an important step for our district. In the last few years, we have seen an increased focus on the developmental stages that children experience, birth through age five, basically the preschool years. State, county, and local organizations are looking closely at the prerequisite skills that children develop and need for school. If you look up at that slide there, the three assessments that are bold are state-required assessments for our children. In preschool, we administer the Ages and Stages Questionnaire, and basically we do that twice a year with parents, and it really looks at their communication, their social development, their independent skills. The Early Learning Assessment and the Kindergarten Readiness Assessment are brand-new this year for our preschoolers and our kindergartners, and it's a combination of performance-based assessments as well as teacher observation. And it was implemented this year now, the ELA would be done twice, once in the fall, once in the spring to show the growth. And then, we had a very interesting and unique opportunity that turned out really well. We partnered with Summit Education Initiative for the TSS, which is the Transition Skills Summary. Twinsburg, along with 78 other preschools and 1,700 students in Summit County, participated in the TSS in the spring of last year. It's based on teacher observation, and it provided really good information about those prerequisite skills from preschool. It's all the information we need. The only problem with it for us is that we only receive 75, information on 75 of our 269 kindergarteners. So, it's giving us the information we want, we're just not getting it for all of our children. All of those assessments are, really look at five domains, and you can see them up there. Communication, how children adjust to school, their growth and fine motor development, pre-academic skills, and social interaction. How do they interact with others, their communication, the independence that they develop before they even get to kindergarten. One of the things, when I talk to kindergarten or parents of incoming kindergarteners, I often hear them say that they're surprised at what we learn in kindergarten. And, you know, we had so many children up here today, looking at our little ones all the way up through high school. And kindergarten was different even five years ago. But if we think about when all of us were five or six years old, I think kindergarten might have looked a little bit more like the left-hand column to us. Do you remember those housekeeping centers? I remember them. We don't have those too much anymore. We took a whole year to learn the alphabet, and if you could read by the end of kindergarten, that was great. But right now, by the end of the first nine weeks, we expect the children to know all their upper and lowercase letters. We expect them to know their sounds, what, how to represent and count zero to nine, making sets of numbers. And by the end of the year, we want them to count to 100 and even read simple text. And here's an example of some of the things that kindergarteners are reading now. Level A through level D reading is about where would be appropriate for most kindergarteners. You can see the difference. The level A text on the left, the title of that book is "I See a Bug." And what you can see there is there are a few words. There's a lot of pattern and repetition, and the pictures give the children clues to what they're reading. As they progress in kindergarten, we would really like the children to be reading at a level D text, and that book is called "Feel Better." Still really wonderful vibrant pictures, but the children can't really focus only on the picture to read the words. They have to really understand what they're reading. There's less pattern, and they need to be able to use the skills that they're learning to understand what's happening. And I thought that that was important to see of what's happening really in kindergarten. I read a quote recently that said, "College and career ready starts way before high school," and sometimes I think it starts right here. Earlier today, Board of Education, I gave you a blue card that looks like this, and I pointed out, all of our parents will be, all of the parents of our incoming kindergarteners will be getting this in the next few weeks. Summit Education Initiative has been doing research on kindergarten readiness for many years now. They are the developers of that TSS assessment that I talked about a couple of slides ago. And their research has shown a correlation between 16 pre-academic skills that you see up there and success in kindergarten. These are the skills that preschoolers would be expected to have in the spring before they enter kindergarten. In their study, over 1,000 preschool children participated in 15 communities, and they found that the preschool students with these 16 skills are three times more likely to be successful when they get to kindergarten. This is the information that we want to gather for our kindergarten students, and we want to share this with parents as soon as we possibly can. So, that brings us to the kindergarten readiness screening. This year, we will be implementing a readiness screening for our incoming kindergarten students starting this spring, starting in about a week or two from now. It will be a series of short assessments that are going to give us a snapshot of the child's development in those key areas that I just shared. The children will come in for about an hour, and they will meet with our trained teachers and staff. While these assessments won't completely replace the beginning-of-the-year tests that we, we give to the students, it really is going to reduce the that we give to the students, it really is going to reduce the time spent on assessments in August and September when our young children are just getting used to school and the routine and being away from home all day. We're going to make it fun and non-scary for them because we do know we're dealing with four-and-a-half-year-olds who maybe would have a hard time separating from a parent or a caregiver for a little while to go with a teacher. And parents are going to leave with some really great ideas of what to work on over the summer with their children. So what it'll look like is, we'll be doing a screening in those areas. For example, in English Language Arts, we'll be asking the children about their letters, the sounds, rhyming, even book concepts. Do they know how to hold a book and turn the page? Can they track from left to right? In the area of math and number sense, we'll be asking about shapes, counting, one-to-one correspondence. The children will travel with three other children, so there'll be a group of four, and they'll be with a teacher the whole time, and that teacher's going to observe some of the social interaction with the children. Can they follow directions? Can they sit for a story? Do they engage with other children? We'll be also doing vision and hearing screenings, and our speech-language pathologists will be doing the KLST, which is a state-required language assessment. It takes about five to seven minutes, but we do find that sometimes language deficits have an impact on their early academic achievement, and so we want to be able to catch that very quickly if we can. And the children won't be in those rotations no more than ten minutes each, so that there'll be a lot of movement built in for them. While the children are engaged with their, with the teachers, the parents are going to do some of the things that they did before all of this. So parents typically would come to Wilcox for about a twenty-minute appointment where they would meet with the secretaries, and at that time, they would go through all of their enrollment paperwork, make sure they have birth certificates, residency information. They will still do that, but they will also have this wonderful opportunity now to meet with the school nurse, to discuss all of the immunizations that are necessary. And then if children have allergies or require medication in school or need a health plan, we're going to have our health professionals there right away, and so they can start being aware of the things that they need to do to take care of this before we get to the first weeks of school. And then we'll be able to have our allergy lists and know about our medications so that when children walk through that door, we're ready to take good care of them. After the children have completed their screenings and the parents have completed their part, they'll be joined back together and have the opportunity to meet for a short conference with a teacher. And that is the point where the teachers are going to talk to the parents about the strengths of their children and make some recommendations for the things that they continue to work on over the spring and the summer. We do expect that, we have scheduled that we can take seventy-two appointments in each of the three days. There will be eleven teachers, health staff, secretaries, speech-language pathologists, definitely an administrator onsite. And in the past, we, in the first three days of registration in March, we have enrolled between a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty students, so we really are hoping for at least that many, maybe more if we can get the word out that we're doing this and we want those children here. And by doing these registrations and screenings, we're joining other high-performing districts in our area, such as Solon, Hudson, Aurora, Beechwood, and Chagrin Falls, all of which are, and they're just some of the many, many that do screenings for our, for kindergartners. So why is this so important? It's important for all of us, for the school and for the parents, so that we are all prepared before school starts in August. It gives parents feedback about their children now, so that if there are some things they want to work on, they have more than five months to do that and help their children be even more ready for when they come to Wilcox. We will be reducing the time spent in August and September on assessments. And it's also going to give the school some baseline information about our children before they even come, so that we can really plan for them, make sure that we have good class balances and rosters and plan our services really well, so that the children are getting a very good start at our school. I think it's really important to note that while the parents will be getting feedback about their children, no parent will be discouraged, no one will be, will feel like their child is not ready for kindergarten because the only requirements are that they're five years old by August first. But we do want them to have a really good understanding of where their child is, so that they can help them, because the parents are their children's first teachers. And we want a really strong partnership with parents and with their early childhood settings in our community. So what can parents do now? If your child is going to be five years on or before August first, we would love the parents to attend, attend our kindergarten kickoff meeting. It is a parent meeting, and it is scheduled for Monday, the twenty-third, six-thirty at Wilcox. When parents come to that meeting, they will have an opportunity to meet our staff, visit kindergarten classrooms, see the wonderful facilities that we have, have their questions answered, and at that time, they will be able to sign up for registration and screening. And the registration and screening appointments will be held March third, eleventh, and the nineteenth. We have day and evening appointments between eight AM and seven PM. Because the children will be going through a bit of an assessment, we are not going as late in the evening as we may have because we are dealing with four-year-olds, four-and-a-half-year-olds who probably need to be getting home and into bed by seven. And instead of doing it at Wilcox, we'll be using the Twinsburg Community Center right by Glen Chamberlain Park this year. They have a wonderful facility, it's going to work perfect for our purposes, and we appreciate the partnership that we have with the city to be able to use that great place. Parents can sign up for these appointments when they come to our kindergarten kickoff Monday night, or they can start calling the school Monday to start setting up days and times to do this. Did you have any questions? Promise?
One question.
Yes.
What can you tell us here tonight that would be good for parents to take away with regard to preparation for the actual registration day? Are there things that they need to be thinking about gathering up, like medical records and things like that? What do they need to bring? I'm sure that's part of a packet that you're going to talk about at the kickoff meeting, but I thought while you had the audience, maybe you could just talk about that.
Yes, that's fantastic. If parents will go to the website, there are several places where they can find the registration packet and information. And it will, it is a lengthy packet, there are twenty pages, I think, about, that they have to fill out and the documents that they need to bring. But basically, we need birth certificates, we need immunization records, we need proofs of residency, so those types of things. If there are any custody agreements, those are the things that the parents will want to bring. And if they go and download all of those forms and have them ready, it would be very helpful. They won't need them for kickoff, but they will need them when they come to registration.
And just one quick comment in regards to early reading and readiness. I know you've probably talked to your parents about the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. If, we have a link on our website in Flyer Central. And for some of you who have kindergartners or little ones at Wilcox, I know you probably do have younger kids too, babies on up to your Wilcox children. But if you register through United Way, there's the link on the website. Your child can get a book, one book for every month from zero to five. So by the time they're five, they have sixty books. So that's something just really good to promote literacy, and it's, right now, it's in four countries. It's in our country, it's in Canada, UK, and Australia, and so it's spreading. It started in the south, and Dolly Parton is gone now in four of the countries right now. But if you haven't registered, it's just a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to get your kids some free books, sixty books.
Yeah, that's fantastic. We did share that information with the preschool families, it, there's children that go to Wilcox, a hundred and seven of those families, so hopefully they signed up. It is a good opportunity.
I just, I just wanted to comment, I know it's been a tremendous amount of work, judging from some of the financial commitments that are on our agenda. It's quite a, quite a long list of teachers and administrators and folks that have been getting ready for this. I know change is the only constant, but thank you, because I think this is, it's a new day. Take this card home to my, get it to my two-and-a-half-year-old niece and tell her to get going.
Get going on there. Well, it is a really big collaborative effort. The teachers are very much behind it, they were very excited when we got the go-ahead. And the Wilcox teachers are fabulous about collaborating, but I have never seen them get into gear in such a way. They're so united and really worked hard in the last couple of weeks to get everything that they felt was really important and necessary. So, very proud of them, and I know that they're going to put their best foot forward when we meet these new families on March third, the first day, so.
Awesome. Good luck with all of this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Board of Education, again, Ms. Villa's leadership on this has been phenomenal. It's been a short turnaround, and staff has been great. And again, we thank the city of Twinsburg for allowing us to use the community center. It's a great opportunity for us to capitalize on that wonderful facility for this very purpose, so thank you for that. Board of Education, our second administrative report is something I believe is near and, about something near and dear to the five of you. As you know, more than a year ago, the Board of Education began a conversation with our administrators, and there was a concern raised that potentially, we were worried about our athletic, our athletes, and our athletes potentially not making a certain grade and being considered ineligible to participate. So the Board of Education suggested that we would study the GPAs of our athletes to determine whether or not those students were making the grade. And what was found to be most interesting is that when we took a look at the students at our high school and middle school who were struggling academically, the subgroup of students who were struggling the most didn't happen to be the athletes. But that did send us on another course to try to figure out what we should do with the subset of students that really were struggling and the schools really didn't have a program of intervention in place to be able to address these particular needs of a pretty large group of kids. So thanks to the vision of our Board of Education and through the work of both the Policy Subcommittee and the Athletic Council, we were able and given permission to hire five academic coaches. And this evening, Board of Education, I have invited our five academic coaches to come forward to present to you what has been going on in our academic coaching program. This is a tremendously successful program here in our school district, and the students who have been engaged with these five outstanding teachers are making tremendous gains. So I'd like to ask them to come forward, our five academic coaches. We have from the middle school, Anna Pavkav and Deanna Sarka, and from our high school, Lisa Roberto, Abigail Teal, and Brandon Towns. And they're here this evening to give us an update as to what's been going on with academic coaching and the great success that our students are finding, thanks to the diligent efforts of these very five, these five very talented educators here at the middle school and the high school. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. At the beginning of the school year, the academic coaches were introduced to the Board of Education, and they were just introduced now. Because academic coaches were new to the district, we had an idea of what we would be doing, but not exactly. As the year has progressed, we have adapted what we have done to best meet these students' needs. We thought it best to have the students explain to you what academic coaching is, how it has helped them, and how, and our successes so far. So, without further ado.
Academic coaching is when you have someone monitoring you, and if you need help on anything, they'll help you with your work.
A teacher helps you with your homework when you're struggling in all your classes.
When we struggle in classes, we go to our, like, from our study labs to the academic coaches and spend half our study lab with them, and they help us with our homework.
Academic coaching is to strive harder. It helps me feel like more successful, I get more help raising my grades.
It helps for me because I can really focus on my work, right? That's really good, that's where I really get it done.
Academic coaching helps me because it helps me get that one-on-one help from the teacher about like the studies in study hall, sitting there and I, like, trying to figure out myself.
The teachers in here are very knowledgeable, and it helps me improve my work better.
It has a lot better environment than a study hall ever could, and it was, with Ms. Teal's help, my grades have been going up a lot.
I get better grades on my quizzes and tests than I used to.
It helps me put my goals first and contribute to my grades and by adding them on each week and setting my goals up.
I think academic coaching is when you are eager to learn things that you don't understand, and that's when the coaching, coaches and teachers come in to help do it.
We come for reading here, we come from PPE, and we read different stories to understand the topic of the study.
Learn how to like write a paragraph or, you know, it's where you expand your vocabulary.
I think academic coaching is a good learning environment for people who are in need. Just when kids have struggles with reading and or math, and we come to these teachers during the study hall, so they can help us achieve our goals.
Well, she gives me extra practice on the work that I need help with, and stuff I don't understand, I get to understand it.
Because it's, I used to read slow when I read it faster.
If we didn't learn something from a different grade or something, because we got like left behind, I love how you go back and teaches it until you get it to move on to.
Do you have any questions for any of us?
Is there anything else that you need? And I'm being serious. I have to tell you, this is one of those areas that I think all of us really feel close to because three different committees were involved in looking at data and understanding students. And when this came to our attention, one of the things that we asked our administrators to do was look outside of the district to see if anybody else was doing something that was working. And the answer was, we couldn't find any golden nuggets. There weren't any silver bullets out there, but there were school districts like ours trying a whole bunch of things. And I think it was in the Finance Committee when the little light bulb went off and we said to the superintendent, "I think we need to spend some money in this area, and you need some resources, what could we do to help?" As board members, this is a decision that we need to help you with. So they went off and came back and said, "Here's what we recommend, and you guys are the result of that." And I've been bugging Mrs. Powers for the last, I don't know how many months. How's it going? And then there was static. But I'm very, very pleased that you're here tonight. I'm very, very pleased to see the results of this, and I think it's awesome that you had the students speaking about how they are being impacted. So the only thing I would say is, it's not a limited pool of money, but what I would say is, make sure if there's students out there that we're missing, and you see that there's something that we need to be doing, that she knows about it, and then that gets communicated back to us, because we want to make sure that all those kids are getting helped. You know, we have AP courses, we have gifted courses, we spend money in those areas, and we felt that we weren't paying enough attention here, and I think you guys are providing that. So thank you very, very much.
I wanted to echo those comments because it did, it's, you know, it started in policy, we were looking for something else, and different data was presented, this, where's Mr. Ango? He came with some data and went, went, "What is this?" You know, and it popped over to athletics, it popped over to finance, and the same, same thing, you know, there's no silver bullets, there's no other districts that have figured this out. They throw a study hall table together and hope, you know, it works. And this was a, this is a big decision, but it, it's highly reflective, and I give the credit to Mrs. Powers, of a data-driven decision. It wasn't like, well, let's try this, try that. You know, we didn't get that much status, we really didn't. And, and this was tough, because we were asked to make, you know, a big dollar decision, and we didn't know, and these numbers are fantastic. And one comment that was shared last year, I was on curriculum technology, and for those that don't know, there are a lot of participants from, you know, the parents in that committee. And one mom turned to us and said, you know, "I have a seventh-grade student..." And one mom turned to us and said, you know, "I have a seventh grade student, and he calls that his extra teacher." And he was, and he was very excited, which meant, it wasn't work, you saw it in the videos, the kids want the knowledge, and they wanted the help, we found a way to do it. And I think this is a presentation, we've already hinted, so sharpen it up for OSBA if we can get you down there, because this is the kind of thing that the other 600 districts need to hear. So congratulations.
Awesome work.
No, Board of Education, we didn't introduce the teachers up at the podium, and I'd like them to take a little credit for who they are and what they do. Lisa Roberto, why don't you start by just explaining what you teach specifically at the high school?
I'm English Language Arts, the academic coach up there.
I'm Anna Pavkow. I do the reading coaching for seventh and eighth grade at RBC.
And I'm Abby Teal. I do the math coaching at the high school.
And Deanna Sarka, I do the seventh grade math coaching at RBC.
Brandon Towns, I do the science coaching at the high school.
And Abigail and Lisa were my guests on Twinsburg Schools today, and they're on our show that's airing right now, and talking a little bit more in-depth about the academic coaching piece, so thank you for that as well. Making tremendous gains with kids who have academic struggles. Thank you very much for being here this evening as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Stuber, too. Before we move off that topic, the other thing that occurred to me while we were listening to the, the results and, you know, the comments after is that part of the decision, I think, to depart from our traditional teaching model surrounded the changes we knew that were coming to curriculum and the additional academic rigor. So I think the other part of this isn't just a, wasn't designed specifically or only exclusively to address the deficiencies, but also we knew that we needed to think more creatively, and we couldn't just plug a hole with the same model that we had been using because we knew the game was changing. And so I also give credit to Mrs. Powers and our administrative team that came up with this idea, rather than, "Let's just go out and hire, you know, five teachers, let's do something a little bit different, mix it up, and see what kind of results." So it's, you know, it's very rewarding to see that something different and creative, you know, brought about such fantastic results.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mrs. Powers, under administrative reports?
Not this evening, thank you.
Very good. Okay, thank you for your patience. Next on the agenda is remonstrance. As a reminder, the purpose of the regular meeting of the Board of Education is to conduct the business of the district, and because the Board of Education represents the school district, which is a public organization, these business meetings are required to be conducted in public. These regular business meetings are different from community forums or other special meetings which are conducted with the specific intent to engage with or encourage interactive discussion with the community. To accommodate public participation as a part of the regular business meetings, an agenda item called remonstrance is included. The conduct for remonstrance is provided for within the Board of Education bylaws, specifically section 0169.1. Persons wishing to speak during remonstrance are asked to provide their name, address, and group affiliation, if any. Comments should be limited to five minutes, and the total time for public participation is limited to 30 minutes. While statements regarding matters of general district policy or procedures are appropriate, statements should not be personally directed nor abusive, nor should statements be made regarding specific disciplinary matters involving students or staff. To address concerns regarding student disciplinary matters or staff performance, the Board requests that you submit such concerns in writing to the superintendent. I do want to thank all of you for your patience tonight. We had a long meeting before this, and I want to compliment you and thank you again for your cooperation. Thirty minutes is what we allot for the public participation, so I do have a number of cards, and unless you have a particular order, I'll just read the cards off as they were handed to me, and then if you would step to the microphone to address the board, your name, address, and affiliation, and then I realize that most of these cards are regarding the park and the Common Core, so we've talked about that a lot tonight, but now it's your turn. So first, I would like to ask Mr. Jeff, is it Diedrich? Your turn, sir, please.
Good evening, Board and administrative staff. I'll just cut right to it. You're probably, you're gonna hear from at least a half dozen parents here tonight with negative connotations towards Common Core and the park testing. To define the terms for the basis of my remarks, I would just like to go over for my own good sake is reviewing a few definitions and terms, starting with the Ninth Amendment of the Constitution. Those rights are not specified, they are referred to as enumerated. The Supreme Court has upheld this, that we have the right to keep personal matters private. Also, the Tenth Amendment says that the federal government has only those powers specifically granted to it by the Constitution. None of those speak to education. The third definition I'd like to cover is of informed consent. Informed consent is something I deal with on a professional level, and it is not only ethical, but is law in many cases. Informed consent is a legal procedure to ensure that all clients, patients, or research participants are aware of the potential risks, costs, involved in treatment or a procedure. In order for the informed consent to be considered valid, the client must be competent, and the consent should be given voluntarily. The test plus the stress equals problems. Psychological, emotional, and even neurodevelopmental problems are being documented in universities around the country. Stanford, Harvard, MIT, just to name a few. All have published studies on the harmful effects of direct instruction of academic skills. I suggest we look them up. Please start with theallianceofchildhood.org. Look for the opinion dated March of 2010. This coalition of over 700 acclaimed childhood education researchers are on record on how harmful the Common Core curriculum is. The local Board of Education here is an elected group of our fellow citizens, neighbors, coworkers, in some instances. I do not see you as an arm of the state. I see you as my representative to the state. We need you to make a stand for us, for our kids, for our school, and for our trust. Common Core and the PAR-CC testing violate our constitutional rights. The testing is unethical, and is not, because it does not proceed under the informed consent procedure. CC and park testing is scientifically violating children, as research is now proving that this test-based accountability system has nothing to do with children learning, but instead using them as guinea pigs. So let's just review what is happening here. A private-held company is using millions of Ohio's kids for personal research without clearly reporting the purpose or procedure to the public. As of next year, there will be no provision in the law to decline, opt out, or refuse the test. This test is an educator-district evaluation process. It is not about evaluating learning. There has been no public declaration of these harmful effects or risks with this curriculum, and with the cooperation of higher levels of state and federal government, there is no longer any expectation of privacy, or a positive incentive to participate in the public education system. After spending eight days in a Birmingham jail, Martin Luther King was quoted as saying, "Academic freedom is a reality today because Socrates practiced civil disobedience." I bring this quote to help frame the efforts of those parents who are refusing the park test for their children. Civil disobedience is our only course to take at this late hour. It is not against the Board of Ed, the teachers, or the other students that are being told to take the test. In fact, it is just the opposite. I propose that we, as a district, stand up for the minds of our kids. We do so by understanding that the grading of the districts is a corrupted system, not interested in the learning of our students, and it is baseless, it is without merit. Therefore, instead of focusing on working within this failed system, we, as a community, should demand a refounding of the Ohio education system without Common Core. Whereas the Twinsburg Board of Ed, the Twinsburg Teachers Union, the Twinsburg PTA, and any other civil organization that wishes to join, I ask them, you all, to help petition the state legislature to remove this and any further centralized testing system not agreed to by the local districts. The alternatives are bleak. Less than a third of the states that originally signed up for Common Core are still in Common Core. There are plenty of states that have abandoned Common Core. We could follow one of their plans. We, the concerned parents of Twinsburg, ask that you start that journey out of Common Core here and now. Thank you for my time.
The next card that I have is Ms. Jennifer Radell.
Good evening, board members. My name is Jennifer Radell. I am a 20-year resident of this community residing at 10192 Alger Trail. I'm a business owner, and I have a degree in elementary education. I currently have two children, grades five and eight in the district. I come to you tonight as a concerned parent. A few weeks ago, my eighth grader brought home a calendar that listed the testing dates for February and March. Park testing, seven and a half hours, not including practice time. As I reviewed the sheet, I thought, "What is park testing? I've never heard of this." So I started researching, and I quickly learned that park is part of the Common Core initiative. I have spent the past few weeks reading about Common Core and have attended multiple formal presentations. I have to tell you, I am truly frightened for the future of education in this country. Twinsburg has outstanding teachers. However, every year, their abilities and effectiveness are diminished as testing replaces more and more instructional time. When I calculate the hours spent taking SLOs, map test, park test, and practice test, our children will have spent over six complete school days testing this year. The following is taken from a letter written by 40 superintendents in Illinois to their state superintendent. As superintendents, instructional leaders for our school districts, and advocates for our children who attend our schools, we believe that the park testing initiative has moved too fast, is ill-planned, does not support the basic tenets of quality formative assessment such as validity and reliability, is consuming vast valuable resources, both human and monetary, and at the district level, and most importantly, will not benefit our students. Twenty-six states elected park assessments at the start. There are less than a dozen left. We have a very small window of opportunity to make our voices heard in the legislature in Columbus. This is the only year that this test will not have consequences. HB487 protects, protects the districts and the teachers as long as they have an MOU. HB7 will protect our children. It was unanimously, unanimously passed by the House and is waiting to go through the For your reference, I have some packets that I'll hand out when I'm finished, that contain the following information. The first page shows how park is a direct violation of the Ohio Revised Code. The second page is a speech given by the president of the School Board District of Garraway Local Schools to the House Committee in support of HB597 to repeal Common Core. And the last page is a copy of the resolution written by the Garraway Local Schools Board of Education regarding the Common Core State Standards Initiative in support of local control of education. I heard the president of the school district speak last night in Cambridge. Attending there were two board members of the Kinston School District, and late this afternoon, I couldn't print it because I was on my way here, Kinston Local Schools has issued a public resolution in support of HB7. Board members, you are elected representatives for us, for our children, and for some of you, your children. I ask you to please do your own research. Do not take the word of others. The facts are out there. The Common Core standards have a copyright, therefore they cannot be changed. But we can repeal them. It's time for our community to work together to support the best interest of our children and tell our legislators that we want out of Common Core.
My name is Brian Snow. I'm at 3067 Killingworth Lane in Twinsburg, Ohio. We've lived here for the last 11 years, and we have two kids in Twinsburg Schools. We had three, and we decided to take one out a couple of, last year. So, anyway, I appreciate the time. I am going to touch on a couple of things. First and foremost, I want to make a statement that my wife and I certainly support testing and understanding where our, our students, you know, get into each of these classes, right? And we understand what their progress is each and every year. But what I do oppose is the park testing. I oppose all of the initiatives that are, are around this race to the top. There are too many strings, there are too many tentacles attached to this initiative. The data, you touched on it, the data is, is being shared. Even the state's policies, laws, whatever it may be, FERPA was changed, and FERPA is now wide open for third parties to access that data. We heard presentations tonight that were talking about gathering health information of our children prior to kindergarten. There is no protection any longer now that FERPA has changed to protect that information from leaking out into third-party education institutions that are businesses trying to use our children's data to drive business money for their businesses. If you don't believe it, do read up on it. This is fact. I'm deeply opposed to this approach, and I am exercising my right to refuse these tests for my children, and I will continue to refuse these tests for my children going forward if we do not repeal these. The second one is poor communication. We've heard tonight that, you know, this has been known for a couple of years, and it's very disappointing for me to hear that it's been known for a couple of years, and yet we, as a public, as, as parents of our students, are starting to get the details now. And quite honestly, you know, we, we've asked many times, many questions about these tests, about the data, about the privacy, and we get very, very little answers. We get vague responses. It's, it's appalling that we are at this stage in the game, and we have as little information that we have today. Even you go district to district, the amount of information, the type of information, the responses we get is, is different from district to district. And I think that that's appalling as a school, as a school district, and even as, as a state of, of Board of, of Education. And lastly, I want to, I want to cite a couple of examples. We acknowledge in writing to the school and to the district that we would be refusing these tests on behalf of our children. And we got back a response that said that, one, that they acknowledge the parental right, exercise care and custody or control over their children in most situations. It's not the intention of Twinsburg City Schools to, or the district, to interfere with that right. I've directed building administrators to follow the following procedures. One, provide an opportunity for each student to test. I get that. We have to adhere to the, the standards, and that is meaning that they have to administer the test, not require that all students take the test. Two, if a student does not log in, the student will be sent to a room other than the testing lab and will read a book during the testing period. No other activities will be provided for the student who does not complete the test. Seems like a very good response. So I'm led to believe that a, another memo was sent after that that was to the following. Issue, with regard to issue about non-testing students, after multiple conversations with legal counsel, the best course of action for us to travel is to treat students with whom parents have submitted a request to be excused from the assessments in the following manner. This is where it gets different from the memo that I received. One, prior to opening the testing window each day, the principal is to have a private conversation with each child for whom we have received a request to be excused from the assessment. Principle is to ask the child if they will test, and if the child declines testing, the principle is to document that conversation and the child's response. Two, if the student does not log in, then the student will be sent to another room and testing lab and reading a book during that testing period. I find this disturbing. I find this interruptive to my rights as a parent to refuse this testing. I find it targeting a group of children. I find it intimidating to a student who is a minor and putting them in a very, very difficult situation. Thank you.
Next, I have Ms. Julie Seitz.
Hello. My name is Julie Seitz. I live at 10271 Bell Meadow Drive, but I am reading for Bethany Mosley, who couldn't be here tonight, and her address is 1476 Park Ridge Avenue. So, I'm reading for Bethany. My name is Bethany Mosley, and I reside at 1476 Park Ridge Avenue in Twinsburg. I currently have two children enrolled in Twinsburg schools, a five-year-old kindergartner at Wilcox and an 11-year-old fifth grader at Dodge. I am not here this evening to share with you my concerns regarding Common Core standards and park testing. There are many troublesome aspects of Common Core that I could address this evening. However, in the limited time available, I would like to focus specifically on the problem of the developmentally inappropriate standards that Common Core is pushing on our youngest children. For at least the past four years, early childhood education experts have been coming out against the Common Core standards. I could stand here and cite the research and studies they have done, but those are easily found online. What I can most effectively do is tell you what I see as an active and involved parent. I help in my son's classroom and in the Wilcox Library every week. I see that this one-size-fits-all mentality of expecting every kindergartner to read and to recite basic addition and subtraction facts by the end of the year is not working. There are some kids who are just not able to do it. It's not from a lack of trying or from lazy parents who don't want to help at home. Their inability to achieve these standards is due to the fact that many of them are just not developmentally capable at this young age. Yet our teachers are forced to push these kids to do things beyond their abilities. As a result, I have seen kids who are in tears because they just can't do it, no matter how hard they try. And believe me, they are trying, but they are frustrated and stressed out, and they are developing a hatred for school and kindergarten. Beyond what I have seen, I can tell you what is happening in my own home. My oldest son loved kindergarten. He had the chance to experience it before the Common Core. He mastered reading and mathematics at his own pace, a pace that was appropriate for his development. He is now in the gifted program at Dodge and earns straight As every quarter. He didn't have to be pushed beyond his abilities to get where he is now. I wish I could say that my younger son loved kindergarten as much. Because of the rigorous math and reading standards now in place, we usually spend about 30 minutes every evening doing homework. Ladies and gentlemen, the National PTA Guidelines recommend 10 to 20 minutes per night for first graders. It's no wonder we are turning out kids who hate school at a younger age than ever. Between sight words, math memorization, and reading requirements, we are pushed to the limit. Because of this, and many other reasons you may hear tonight and over the course of the coming weeks, I am asking the board to take the bold and brave action of passing a resolution against Common Core standards. Please act in the best interest of the children you have been elected to protect. Do not allow big business and profiteering to take the place of what is best for our children. Thank you for your time, and good night.
Thank you. Mr. Richard Bammle.
Good evening. My name is Richard Bammle. I reside at 3454 Cannon Road here in Twinsburg. I can start off with the definition of school. School is an institution for educating children. Where in this definition does it say an institution for commercial research? Or does it say data gathering institution? The average person elects officials like members on this board to various positions throughout our government and trust that they will make the best decisions on our behalf. I'm one of these individuals, as are most parents that live in Twinsburg. One week ago today, I attended a seminar about Common Core, and I have to admit, I came in a little skeptical. I, like most parents with school-aged kids, have had the same dealings with Common Core and its eccentric form of math. I hear people talking, I hear people talking about Common Core, I've heard people talking about Common Core in the past on the radio on my drives to and from work. As I listened, I started to hear about the testing that was coming up in the near future related to Common Core called park tests. It was about this time I also heard about a seminar being held in Twinsburg and decided my wife and I should attend to try and further educate ourselves on this topic. One week ago today, I attended the seminar on Common Core, and I have to admit, I asked several questions. A week ago, I attended the class. Within the first 30 minutes of the presentation, I have to say, I was shocked. I questioned myself, how many people know what was planned for their child's education? It was clear this process has been going on for 23-plus years. This is proven by the letter to Hillary that's on federal register that describes the outlying takeover of the public education system to the federal government. It's on record. I urge you to look it up. It's an 18-page letter that outlines the entire process, and we are in the final stages of that letter. As other people rated too, there's 40 superintendents in Illinois school districts urging state officials to delay the park tests. They feel they're not confident they can administer the test properly and question whether the data obtained from the test will have any value. I'm not going to present any more facts, as many other families and parents here, concerned parents, have presented, I think, enough facts for you guys to do your own research and look for this information that we're speaking of. It's out there, you just have to dig a little bit, but it's out there on government websites. It's there on the Department of Education's website. It's there for you to see. When others in this district told us that we could not do something, we did not stop it, no. We found the information, we found the information, proved they were incorrect, and this is our right, and we are exercising them in the form of our civil disobedience by not taking this test. This is our children we are dealing with, not a corporate guinea pig. My question for the board, I don't know if it can be answered, I'm asking, what is the district's private privacy policy? And does it protect my child from any and all third-party organizations, including the federal government, to obtaining and storing any child's personal information and educational information? That's it. Thank you.
Next, I have Ms. Melanie Jolton.
Good evening. My name's Melanie Jolton, and I'm going to share a letter written by Carly Genovese. So, it starts with, "As you are well aware, much discussion and opposition has taken place recently concerning Common Core curriculum and park standardized testing. I myself am not an opponent of testing in general, and I believe in measuring student growth progress as well as evaluating teacher performance to a point. However, just like in any science experiment, to truly chart results, you must change only one variable at a time. So, on park test mornings, every child should be fed the same breakfast, wake up at the same time, and have the same family support system as their individual homes in order to truly evaluate teacher, district performance, and individual intelligence. Sound preposterous? So does giving a test that is age inappropriate and expecting students to feel confident and secure while answering questions that the majority of adults may receive incorrect answers on. The whole is greater than the sum of its parts. Please be assured that no parent is trying to be disrespectful by opting out or refusing to have their child take the park test. This is not a personal vendetta against the educators and the Twinsburg City School District, but rather an opportunity to support children's creativity and passion while eliminating the pressure and anxiety caused by trying to conform to state standards and government beliefs in a future career choice. I have read multiple disturbing articles where certain government officials, educators, and other influential and affluent individuals have the desire to steer children towards a specific career, most of these being STEM-related. Who are they to tell my child she shouldn't aspire to be a famous horseback rider or artist, but rather a mechanical engineer? If all children chose to be doctors, engineers, computer technologists, and math professors, who would manage your favorite restaurant? Cut your hair? Scan your items at Target? Or teach that exercise class? And as I was reading that, the opposite is true. What if a child was deemed to be a garbage man but aspired to be a doctor? Would they be allowed to fulfill and aspire? Uh, let's see, I'm so sorry. A master's degree or PhD does not make you great, but the hard work, determination, creativity, and passion you put forth doing what you love is what makes you great and is America. No test can measure that. The whole is greater than the sum of its parts. Reformulating standardized testing and revising Common Core curriculum needs to happen at a cellular level since it is all part of a bigger picture. Case in point, I have a family member who's a psychologist. Upon graduating from college, she needed a way to earn money. She was asked if she could test my children. She herself would receive $100 per child, and each child would receive 20 if they took the test. With the desire to help her out, I asked my children if they were interested in earning extra money. This was their choice, not forced. The testing company was Pearson. The test results were to be used to devise educational curriculum. I never gave the situation a second thought until now. Where did that money come to compensate my children and the testing psychologist? For park testing, where does the money come from to pay the testing fee for each student, which is approximately $29.50 per child? Hopefully, Ohio will reconsider its position on park and Common Core curriculum as well. But with parents complying with park testing, how will change ever transpire? I know you feel this inadvertently affect the district with their funding and the report card scores, but a take-one-for-the-team attitude will get us nowhere. We request a real-world questions and scenarios with our children's homework and standardized tests. Not if Bob had a five-foot board and he cut that board into 12 pieces, how large is his neighbor's board, who he saw him cutting yesterday? My child and children are intelligent and not successful because of Twinsburg City Schools' Iowa test, OAA, or park says so. But because when I ask them, why do you think hand sanitizer doesn't freeze in the cold weather, they respond, because there's alcohol in it, mommy. I taught them that instead of giving them a sample park test. Someone will always outperform you, and there will always be more than one way to do something. I remind my children of this often. Be respectful, kind, empathetic, and try your best in all things, and you will make a difference in this world. And when you do, no one is going to ask you how well you performed on park or if you ever took it at all. If they do, tell them Bill Gates, President Obama, and Mark Zuckerberg never took it, and look at where they are now. At the end of the day, Mrs. Powers, you still need someone to answer your phone at the Board of Education building. Good thing that person didn't aspire to be the superintendent, since we all need types of people to make the world go round. The whole is greater than the sum of its parts. Aristotle. Sincerely, Carly Genovese. Genovese. Thank you.
I have one more card here this evening. Mr. Ray Deersing. I don't know if I see Mr. Deersing out here. Not here. His card actually says he wanted to talk about a thank you and a request. I don't know what the request is, but... Quickly, please.
I'm only doing this because there were certain facts to look at.
Thank you.
My name's Adrian Gordon. I live at 10304 Clipper Cove in Reminderville. To understand why I refused the park assessment on behalf of my children, I need to explain a little bit about my son. Everything felt normal about raising Dominic as a baby and toddler. He spoke at the normal times. He learned his letters and his numbers. He played at the park. He smiled. He also banged his head against the wall. He flapped his arms, and he held a pencil like this. By kindergarten, we knew holding a pencil like this was going to be a problem. We begged for help from the Twinsburg School District, and we were told, he's doing fine, his standardized tests are good, his COGAT and Ohio skills are slightly above average. Fast forward to second grade, he's still holding pencils like this, and his communication's becoming odd. We knew something was wrong, but at the same time, he's reading chapter books. And by reading, I mean glancing at pages and memorizing every word on that page. Out of the blue, a teacher came to us and said, have you tested him for autism? Of course, that would explain a lot. So in a handful of weeks, we went through a myriad of tests at the Cleveland Clinic Center of Pediatric Neurology and the Center of Autism. We were handed the news that Dominic was a high-functioning autistic. We brought the schools the news, and we were told that they were declining the diagnosis of autism because his standardized tests were good and his IQ was slightly above average. By third grade, he became fascinated with planes. He checked out an aerospace engineering college textbook on how to build a plane, and he read the entire thing. By fourth grade, he was into quantum mechanics, and he was researching that. Meanwhile, he went to school every day, and he struggled with timed math tests and increasingly difficult writing assignments because his communication was awkward, and he held a pencil like this. By fourth grade, he came to me and he said, Mom, I think I am clinically depressed. That day, my husband and I hired an educational advocate with one objective, to get the Twinsburg School District to agree to a diagnosis of autism so that we could get an IEP, qualify for the autism scholarship, and get him out of the school district. As part of that process, we required a third-party IQ test that didn't require him to use a pencil like this. In the process of finding him a new educational home, we got a phone call from Twinsburg. Thank God. They were going to move him into the gifted program. Today, he is flourishing in the district, and we are very, very happy with the support that we get from the teachers and the administration. He's in seventh grade, taking ninth-grade algebra. He's in honors English. He would be, his world cultures and social studies teachers would tell you he could teach the class. He was also elected president of RBC this year as an autistic kid. So what does this have to do with park assessment? Under the vision of park, there's a 400 longitudinal data point system that will capture any and all pieces of information that are deemed by the powers to be relevant, and they are attached to a student's name. Although you will hear that the data shared will not be shared outside of this district, new changes in the FERPA law in 2012 absolutely make it legal to do so. The database can be used to predict a student's future performance and be targeted and tailored to individuals accordingly. Right now, it starts in third grade. Soon, it will be done from P to 20, or preschool, to 20 years in age. The concept of the P to 20 initiative is to correlate educational path to workplace opportunity. Get that? In no uncertain terms could any algorithm or statistical model have predicted my son would be as successful as he is today as recent as four years ago. He's an outlier, and I say this with conviction, as I'm hired by Fortune 500 companies every day to build statistical models, find outliers, and make recommendations on what to do with them, and I'm considered an expert in my field. The story that you will hear is this database is to be built from park results to help build Common Core curriculum. And as a stats expert, I can assure you, there is no mathematical reason whatsoever to associate a name with a database record for data mining. So I can only ascertain that there's a more sinister reason for changing the FERPA laws two years ago to allow this to happen, whether it be for retail or for workforce management. Either way, it's not copacetic in my eyes. I fear we are sitting on the sidelines while Pearson and the ODE set up a social experiment for our kids based on statistical trends. I know that sounds extreme, but now there's no law stopping them. If Dominic's future education was pigeonholed based on a third grader performance, he would be told, you're doing okay, your standardized tests are okay, you're slightly above high, average IQ, get ready for an average life. But I don't see that first future, and anyone in this room that knows Dominic doesn't see that first future either. In fact, I don't want any kid ever told, get ready for an average life. So I'm asking you to stand in solidarity with me to protect the kids from being statistically profiled. By the way, he still holds a pencil like this, and there's a lot of kids out there that have an undefined pencil struggle that's going to be blocked by this testing. If there's any truth to the P-20 vision that is going to be shared tied to a student's name, we could result in a generation of stifled creators, potential leaders that are stopped by predictive modeling. I implore you, everyone here today, choose not fear, but choose what's right. Choose to fight for the privacy of our children. Demand anonymity legislation be tied to the park testing. Thank you very much for your time.
Ladies and gentlemen, again, I want to thank you for your cooperation tonight. I know there's a lot of emotion behind this. We certainly collected a lot of information. We hear you. Some of this information obviously is in conflict with the information that we receive through, you know, our sources. So, to some degree, it's going to take some time to kind of sort through all of this. I think with that, you know, there is not a plan to take any action tonight based upon the comments. There's a lot that's weighing here. This is a very emotionally charged topic, and I think we need to just... This is a very emotionally charged topic, and I think we need to just, you know, move forward with our business tonight. We'll, you know, speak with the superintendent. We actually have the opportunity to vet some of these questions with our legal counsel, and we'll let them advise us accordingly, and we'll move forward. So, I do want to thank you, though. I think that it is important in the society that we live in that you exercise your right to speak, and you have done so tonight. And I want to thank you for being respectful in how you did that. I appreciate that you stood here and spoke your mind and did so in a respectful manner. So, thank you very much. And without anything else, Mrs. Powers, unless you have something administratively, I'd like to move forward in the agenda.
I do not. Thank you. In fact, can I just say something really quick as well? It'll be short and brief. I just also wanted to go on the same line that Ron did. We thank you. Many of us here have children in the school district, and we appreciate you guys coming out and expressing your opinions and your data. So, thank you. And we have heard what you said. Thank you. I know it's hard to come up and speak in front of a group, and you were all very brave, and I know most of you are advocating for your kids as, you know, we all, like I said, we have children in the district as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our treasures report and recommendations. Before I read the motions, Mr. Aho, is there any comments that you have for us this evening before we take actions?
No, pretty much the same thing. There's the minutes in the financial report, check register. Last item on there is some reclassifications of some entries that were originally classified as advances. They should be transfers. Went back and did the research on them. The auditors made the suggestion that we reclassify them. So, the one was for like, when they did the old scoreboard at the stadium, some of that money was shared between us and a Pepsi grant. So, that was, should have been a transfer over. So, that's kind of the stuff that happened there.
Very good. Without objection from my colleagues, I would like to read H1 through 4 together, consent agenda. Item H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes from the special meeting of January 29th, 2015, and also the regular meeting of February 4th, 2015, which was sent to the Board under separate cover. H2, that the Board of Education accepts the following financial report for the month of December 2014, the Bank Reconciliation General Fund Financial Summary Report and the Financial Report by Fund. Item H3, that the Board of Education accepts the check registers for the month of December 2014. The total, including payroll and debt service, is $4,195,602.53. And lastly, item H4, that the Board of Education approves the recoding, reclassification of advances per the suggestion of the auditor of the State of Ohio as sent to the Board under separate cover. Is there a motion for these four agenda items, please? So moved. Moved by Mr. Felber, a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Is there any further discussion on these items? Mr. Aho, I think you covered the last one that I was going to ask you to comment on, so... And we talked about this during the audit committee, so this is just a follow-up from cleanup of some of those minor reclassifications. Roll call, please.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. And those four items pass 5-0. We will now move on to action items regarding personnel. Without objection, I will read items I1, 2, and 3 together, consent agenda. Item I1, that the Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I1 as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Item I2, that the Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I2 as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And item I3, that the Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I3 as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is there a motion for these three agenda items?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Davis, a second, please.
Second.
Second by Ms. Terrell Waldron. Just one note, under I2, we do have a retirement that I would like to highlight. Ms. Hadakovic is retiring after 13 years of service to the district. She was a cook at the Bissell School, and just want to highlight and thank her for her years of service to the district. Any other comments under these three agenda items?
Mr. Stuber, if I could just point out, my recommendation this evening is for the Board to approve Rebecca Huffman as our new parent mentor. As you know, for many, many years, the district has had a parent mentor that has been supported by the Ohio Department of Education through one of their grant programs. And last spring, Becky Thomas, who was our parent mentor for many years, departed from our district to, I think she takes, she's actually working for the city of Twinsburg over at the REC Center. So, she did a great job meeting with parents of students with disabilities. And when you have a child who has struggles, it's good to have somebody who knows a lot about the federal law, IDEA, and really can help answer a lot of questions that parents might have about school and programs and such. So, we're very delighted to recommend to you this evening Rebecca Huffman as our new parent mentor, and she'll start on the 23rd, I believe.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion on these items? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. And those three items pass 5-0. Next on the agenda is new business under agenda item J. Again, without objection, I will read all eight of these together as consent agenda. Many of the items are regarding curriculum. Item J1, that the Board of Education accepts a donation to the Twinsburg High School of a wheelchair from the VFW Post in Twinsburg. The value of the wheelchair is $175. The donation is documented in exhibit J1. Item J2, that the Board of Education accepts a donation to the RB Chamberlain Middle School of a wheelchair from the VFW Post in Twinsburg. The value is $215 per exhibit J2. Item J3, that the Board of Education accepts a donation to the Dodge Intermediate School of the cost of transportation for the fourth-grade field trip from the Dodge PTA, the value of $1,039.50 per the attached exhibit J3. Item J4, that the Board of Education adopt and purchase Unbroken, the Young Adult Adaptation, Olympian's Journey From Airman to Castaway to Captive for U.S. History at the Twinsburg High School. The proposal is for $3,675. The adoption was approved at the Curriculum and Technology Meeting held on February 17th. This was sent to the Board under separate cover and is a permanent improvement expenditure. Item J5, that the Board of Education approves the adoption of the Revised AP Art History Course of Study at the Twinsburg High School. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum and Technology Committee on February 17th and was sent to the Board under separate cover. Item J6, that the Board of Education approve and adopt the AP European History Course of Study. The adoption was approved at the Curriculum and Technology Meeting held on February 17th and sent to the Board under separate cover. Item J7, the Board of Education approves and adopts the AP Human Geography Course of Study. The adoption was approved at the Curriculum and Technology Committee on February 17th and sent to the Board under separate cover. And finally, item J8, that the Board of Education adopts the Pre-Engineering Technologies Course of Study. This adoption was also approved at the Curriculum and Technology Meeting that was held on February 17th and sent to the Board under separate cover. Is there a motion for these eight agenda items, please?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Davis, a second, please.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kane Criswell. Any discussion on these eight items?
Just real quick, the teachers who were promoting these courses yesterday at the meeting, they were really, really enthusiastic about this, and if they can be even half as enthusiastic as they were in the meeting, they're going to really hook these kids in these courses. So, excited about these.
Good.
And just a thanks to the VFW and the PTA, the Dodge PTA, for their contributions.
Very good. Yes. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. And those eight items pass 5-0. In the agenda, we are now miscellaneous. Do any of my colleagues have any further comments tonight or anything from our administrative team? We do have need for an executive session this evening. I will make the motion that the Board enters into executive session at 9:40 PM to prepare for negotiations with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment with the Board's legal counsel as per Board of Education Policy 0166 Paragraph E. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Felber. A note that there will be no action taken after this executive session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
That motion passes 5-0. The Board will now move into executive session. I want to thank everybody who stayed for the entire evening, for your patience this evening.